Thank you, Sheriff. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wayham Planning Board for May 22nd, 2023, for those of you in person and for those we are broadcasting via Zoom. We will call the meeting to order with a roll call. Sherri Quirk.
Here.
Mike Baptiste.
Here.
Jane Gleason.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Here.
Carl Schultz.
Here.
And the Chair, Michael King, is here. I'm missing Mike. All right. For some of you nice folks that came here on the premise of listening to some specific projects, I do a little quick housekeeping. I think I'm going to probably disappoint you folks, but it is what it is. First up, I'm going to go out of order on the business. First up, Item 4, Julian Miles Johnson A&R, 32 and 34 Elmore Street, map 38, lot 229 and 230. That request has been withdrawn. That came in late this afternoon.
It's withdrawn, not continued?
Withdrawn. Moving down to continued public hearings, which these were listed as public hearings in error. They should have been up in preliminary business. But regardless, 7-20 Borrego Solar System and 9-20 Borrego Solar System, they have requested a continuance until 6/26, so that it allow the board to continue to gather information from professional expert sources. So that won't be heard tonight.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes. We have to vote on a continuance.
But it's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
It was put down here by mistake.
It's not a public hearing.
Right.
Okay, this should be in public hearings.
Correct. It should be up in preliminary business.
Thanks for keeping us on the straight and narrow.
Hey, I knew what was going on. It just came to our attention, unfortunately, that we've had another error in posting and that the wrong draft for the discussion with possible vote on the design guidelines has been put up on the website. So we will open the hearing and then...
The hearing's been opened. We didn't close.
I mean...
There we go.
You're right. So we will not be discussing that tonight because you folks don't have a copy of the correct document. The draft was dated May 18th, and that's not what was posted online. So unfortunately, we will have to move that to a future date.
Mr. Chairman, just to confirm through you to Ms. Gleason, May 18th is the date we should be looking at.
That's the date that I put on the latest draft.
You sent us directly. I have that.
I sent you two drafts, one that had no date on it that was really preliminary. And I went through after that and made a bunch of grammatical corrections and a little bit of correction to the outline format. And that's the May 18th draft is the latest one.
That's the one I looked at.
That's the latest.
So we will take a vote to move the discussion with possible vote for the design guidelines in WV1R District, draft dated May 18th, 2023, and move that to...
June something.
We get June 8th or June 22nd?
What's on the 8th?
On the 8th, we have Article 14 and 15.
Update, okay.
Updates. And on the 22nd, we have Farring Hill.
It might not be bad to put it with the 15, Article 15.
That's what I'm thinking.
So I move that we continue the discussion of the proposed design guidelines in the WV1R District, current draft dated May 18th, although we may have a newer draft until June 8th.
8th. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor, Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. I apologize to everybody that came out to hear this stuff. It looks like we tripped over our own feet tonight.
Well, not on the Borrego ones. That came in late, right?
The Borrego ones came in very late, yes. Okay. So back to the top of the list. Preliminary business, approval of meeting minutes dated April 10th, 2023, April 27th, 2023, and May 8th, 2023, as everyone had a chance to read and absorb said minutes. Sam? You're good? No revisions, no comments? Sherri?
I'm good.
Mike?
Good.
Jane?
I'm good.
I would entertain a motion to approve said minutes dated April 10th, 2023, April 27th, 2023, and May 8th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
And a motion by Sherri Quirk, seconded by Carl Schultz. All in favor? I'm going to mix it up this time. Sam? Carl?
Aye.
Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Did you vote aye?
You're going to be confused because you went out of order.
Yes.
I'm just Ben Shaw from Jane.
I was going to say...
And the Chair votes aye. Meeting is approved.
At some point, it just, it's not worth...
Talking about how to clear a room. Next up, 3-23 Baypoint Club LLC, A&R, 19 Baypoint Drive, map 9, lot 1004B and 1004A-1, and 4-23 Baypoint Club LLC, A&R, 19 Baypoint Drive, map 2, lot 1004A. Who wants to start? Do we have anybody here or online? That would be a no. Someone raise their hand?
No one.
No one's raised their hand? Yep. Before you make your comment, I just want to make a note for the record that there is no one here to represent the Baypoint Club.
Talk about arrogance.
Hmm?
Talk about arrogance.
Yeah, it is...
Unbelievable.
I just got a text message from Tim Fay. It says Bill Rose is unable to make this evening's meeting.
Do we want to move forward without them?
I was going to say, without representation, I would think we would want to put this off until another meeting.
Although I do believe, for discussion, 423 is the, are the properties along Baypoint or along Onset Avenue? I think there's a way forward on that one if we answer two questions, but without the applicant here, I don't know. So the first question is Jonathan can confirm for 423, we got an updated Mylar? And it removed the statement, subject to covenant, or whatever that crazy language was.
Correct.
All right. And per recommendation, I think, from Mr. Buckland and from the town attorney, I think we could probably move forward with that if you think it's okay without the applicant being here.
That's right. It's straightforward. It's got frontage on Onset Avenue, and it's acceptable as an A&R.
And then we can not condition it, but then we can make another motion requiring a minor modification to the special permit?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's two motions, right?
That's right.
So while my... Well, my question first would be, has the question concerning the suspected lapsed bond, has that been answered? I mean, can we do a minor modification to a phase that is not current with the COAs because the bond is not in force?
The bond is enforced on Phase 2.
So that was sort of, you asked me, that was sort of the way the discussion went, that all of that moved to Phase 2, and we're still covered with the bond. And that is also part of the property that's covered under the Phase 2.
And Phase, so Phase 1 and Phase 2 are not joined at the hip?
The, as I understand our discussion, Mr. Buckland, we confirmed that all of the requirements for Phase 1 got subsumed in Phase 2.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a modification of the special permit. The original special permit that was done for Phase 1. These have been modifications of the special permit as we've gone along with the individual phases.
So all of the requirements for Phase 1 that aren't completed yet?
Are still enforced.
Are still enforced?
That's correct.
So we're acting on a minor modification to Phase, effectively Phase 1 and Phase 2?
Phase 2. I think we should just say, just before we, I think it's Phase 2. The other thing we did confirm with Mr. Fay is that we have a tripartite agreement that covers Phase 2, and we have, which has a bond associated with it.
Which is in effect, which is in force.
Which is in effect. But Phase 3 is covered by...
Covenant.
Covenant. So those two pieces are separate. Mr. Fay is open to moving forward and getting that resolved, but there are two separate protections in place. And this would affect Phase 2. The tripartite agreement covers Phase 2. We can do a minor modification.
How does...
This is very strange.
It's very, yeah, it's confusing. So how, judging by the location of these lots in reference to the overall project, how do they become part of Phase 2?
They're not. The only reason it's part of Phase 2 is that little triangle of property that...
That extends into the golf course and the, over the drainage easement of the subdivision. So it covers over portions of land that were under the original special permit that was issued for Phase 2.
So with his modification, he needs to move that property out of Phase 2.
Which he hasn't done.
Which he hasn't done. But the A&R, I've been advised, and I think we have a letter from the attorney, it meets the requirements for the A&R, but for planned completeness, we should do a minor modification to Phase 2, which are two separate and non, we can't make the A&R contingent on the update, but we can require the update. So that's two different motions.
So by requiring the update, what does that do for us?
Just does nothing for us other than get the plan sets in the registry of deeds all correct and matching the real world. Is that a fair statement? It just keeps the paperwork in sync.
That's right. It's getting into exactness on the ownership and responsibilities.
So that piece of, that piece of property that you're referring to, that has only an effect on Phase 2? It has nothing to do with these four lots?
Well, actually, it has to do with the, Jonathan, why don't you bring the Mylar over here? But it has to do with... Oh. It has to do with these lots because the lot line is going to, one of the properties is going to include...
A piece of property that doesn't belong to...
No, no. Well, it does, and he can do it. It just would make it more complicated in terms of...
Well, I guess I'm asking the question because can we request that the correction to the lot lines first?
And, okay.
And then do the A&R?
That would be the perfect world, but I've been advised that we can't condition the A&R.
Well, we just don't act on the A&R until the lot line is...
Then the A&R is approved by default.
Why?
Because that's what the state law says. If you don't act on it and say it's a subdivision within 21 days, then it's approved by default.
So we can't condition it, but we can deny it?
Yeah, you can say it's a subdivision, but it's not a subdivision.
Everything concerning this project is a pain in the backside.
Yep.
Every aspect.
The proponent should be here to answer questions.
Yes, he should. So it's these lots here?
This guy, it's been like this since day 1.
I don't know which plan set.
Can you come in? How many times we've raised the same?
It's this, right here.
That little triangle, which affects this lot.
Right.
Which plan set?
I just looked at you. It's a monotone, too. So you just...
Yeah, but I don't know that this sounds, that this plan set...
And that's not consistent with this.
No, it's not. Let's go deeper in.
I know, I'm confused.
Yeah, it's... It's not what I expected to see on this plan set.
No, that doesn't look like this bigger drawing.
For the sake of the minutes, can you guys reference what you're...
We are looking at a Mylar document from the applicant, signed 522, 2023, Bradford Travers. But I'm trying to look at what plan it refers to. So unless he changes standard here...
This is...
The reason they put that jargon in the first place was to get the Mount area to...
Yeah, but what goes prior?
Let's look at, let's look at the new...
Let's look deeper in.
Right. This guy's been a real pain in the butt.
Yeah, he wouldn't know anyway.
That circle go to that line?
Trent Rose would.
Can it, can it? I mean, this one's got it, it's sort of arbitrarily placed.
There used to be a little piece here. There's a triangle.
Didn't they modify the wrong set when they removed the one phrase that we had an issue with? That's kind of what it's looking like.
I know what you said, Kim. How can we do this? You don't know what we're looking at. They're not going to explain what they're doing.
I bet what they did is they pulled the wrong set.
One time, these two lots were shuffled around to get 45,000 square feet. Because they were talking about putting duplexes on them.
And they make them into like puzzle pieces.
Yeah. You know, this day.
Well, if he does this as the A&R, he's going to screw his property.
This is the A&R here.
Then what is this?
I don't know. It's dated today.
This set's not anything...
This is the lot that's changing.
So can you identify that document as well?
This is a document dated 522, 2023, signed by Bradford Travers, and it doesn't have a name on it yet that I can find. It's an A&R plan.
You're right.
Assessors plat, two lots, 1004A, 1A, and 1004A-3, and 1004A...
Dash 4.
I don't know what that other document is. And this is the piece that...
This is the piece he has to take out.
Take out of...
This piece from the line that runs along here. There's this piece he wants to add into the subdivision. And this piece is the compensation for area that goes into the golf course area and the drainage easement for the subdivision.
This piece here? Or this piece here?
This piece here.
The whole piece.
But there isn't a solid line here?
That's because it's an easement.
Yeah, here's the solid line.
Yeah, I see that.
He's taking all this easement, though, right? Up over here, too, right? On this lot. So it's really all of this that he's taking out.
And is that necessary? Can't this circle go right to that property line? Why is it, it's sort of arbitrarily placed.
Why is it off?
And I mean, that dimension looks pretty close to that dimension, which means he wouldn't have to do this.
No, he has to get the whole easement onto this property. All of this is in the lots, right?
Oh, the 30, to this line?
Yeah.
Not to this line?
Well, it's to this black line here is what he's making the... This is why we need...
Yeah, yes. He's creating this, this lot here.
Right.
And this lot here.
Which is taking property away from the special permit. All of this land up here, I believe, is part of the special permit.
And what he gets in return is he gets his turnaround, be placed back into the subdivision.
Okay.
So is this the easement line? Or is this the easement line?
The easement line is now the property line.
Yeah, this whole shaded area, as I read it, is the easement.
But what is this line, then?
It's a center line, I think. Oh, that's the end of the MR30 zone.
Oh, okay.
So some...
Coming this way or this way?
This way is MR30, and then on the other side is Conference Recreational.
So how come the hatching here is different from the hatching here? Why doesn't it come to a line here? I'm confused by why the hatching shifts. The hatching, which I'm assuming refers to the easement. The line's going this way?
Let's see how we get one on it.
Okay. I think we need our engineer to review this and tell us what the hell, from our side, what's going on.
Yeah, but he's just told us if we don't act on it, it's got a, it's got a...
Not if we continue it.
You can't continue an A&R.
So our option is to deny it based on a lack of information?
Or because the plans are incorrect? Or because we don't understand the plans?
Right.
It's an incomplete filing.
An incomplete filing, which is, is that different than a denial?
No, it's the same thing.
I don't know the legal answer to that, but it would seem to be.
Okay.
It would make sense, I think.
Yeah.
I have two designations that do the same thing.
So I, I mean, my opinion is, is we deny it due to a lack of information based on an incomplete filing.
I agree 100%.
And that he refiled plan on the 10th of the meeting.
I wouldn't know what we're voting on.
I am completely lost.
Exactly.
Completely lost. And for something as important as the attorney led us to believe at the last meeting, you would think someone would be here to speak to us.
I agree 100%. Even the request for him to show up this week, the speeding?
Well, yeah, it didn't need to be the attorney. They could have had their engineer.
The engineer would have been a better, a better rep.
By the way, they've switched engineering companies.
They're still using Principi.
They're not Principi?
Yeah, it's the same one.
I thought, they told me they, Chris is no longer there. They weren't using Principi.
Chris is not the engineering firm.
He's not the project manager anymore.
He's the project manager for the Bay Point.
But I thought, he told me they hired another firm, but...
Well, I see Waterman.
Waterman, yeah.
Waterman is the, who's there?
Okay, doesn't matter.
My advice is to say there's a lack of information and...
If everyone's done looking for maps, can you all sit by the microphone again?
No.
You're already sitting. You don't have to give a damn.
Bob's cranky. Bob's cranky.
Keep him in line.
There's a kid with longer hair than him around.
I would suggest that you find it, lack of information, and deny it as an incomplete submission.
So moved. Second.
We have, we have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor of denying this A&R, map 9, lot 1004B and 1004A1, and map 2, lot 1004A, based on a lack of information? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Just to confirm, that's the 4-23 project?
That is the 3-23 and the 4-...
Oh, we didn't, are we going to deny both of them, then? They're two separate applications. We didn't look at the other plan set. Let's take care of 4-23, which your motion makes perfect sense for.
Yep, okay. So 4-23 Baypoint Club LLC, A&R 19 Baypoint Drive, map 2, lot 1004A.
So moved is modified. I need a second and...
I'll reconfirm the request for motion to deny the A&R request due to a lack of information and representation on the proponent's part.
So moved.
He stole your motion, but that's okay. You could second.
You could so move. I'll second.
We're just, we're just going to...
I need a second just to confirm this.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. All right, so 3-23?
Mr. Chairman, a request, presuming the applicant, who's under some pressure, is going to resubmit this, I request that we have our engineer review the plan and be present to speak to us and ask questions.
Yeah, I think...
Or answer questions.
I think we should put it on the record that we would want our engineer to review this and both our engineer and their engineer to be present at the next meeting. So that we can put this to bed if possible.
If they want to resubmit. There's no penalty, right? If we deny for, they don't have to wait two years or anything to resubmit?
No, they don't.
So this is the plan for the other two lots?
I don't know what this is.
This is 1004A.
Yeah, this is the Phase 4, the one where they split the lot for the clubhouse and the Phase 4 development.
So we're supposed to be looking for a lot, 1004B and 1004A1?
That drawing is in the 323.
So...
So...
To, Mr. Fay made, just, I don't know what we're going to do, but I believe that this would also require a minor modification to the special permit, but also I believe the A&R is, it has frontage on Baypoint Drive. So it meets the requirements for any A&R. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But it should also require a minor modification to the special permit?
I'm assuming so because there wasn't anything in the special permit that identified this that I could find.
Okay. Just, Mr. Fay's explanation of what he's doing at a simple level made sense. When we approved the modification to special permit, ownership of the entire parcel was the Baypoint Club.
That's right.
Correct. Baypoint Club is not a developer. So what he's doing is separating out that portion of the property, which is the clubhouse, don't hold me to be exact, from where the...
Where Phase 4 is?
Where Phase 4 is so that he can title the property, Phase 4, to Windward Pines, who is a developer. That was his explanation of the reason.
So parcel 1004B is Phase 4?
I don't want to go that far and say that.
Well, I'm pretty sure, based on recollection from previous meetings and the fact that it has so much furniture on Baypoint Drive, I would say that's Phase 4.
I think you're correct. But again, that, the engineer, if the engineer were here, it would be easier.
I would love to have someone here to guide us through this.
We can't, we can't, we can't continue it. We either need...
Can't continue. We can continue it due to a lack of information.
Well, then we have to deny it for the same reason as the last one.
May I ask a quick question? May I interject? That drawing is actually in the, did we just vote on 423?
423.
That is the drawing that's in the 423 file. And the drawing that we were looking at before that had a different, was 323, which had a different configuration for that lot at the circle. lot at the circle.
No, 323. I'm sorry. We voted on 423.
Yeah, and this drawing right here...
It has the right, it has the right map, lot numbers.
Is in the 423 file.
When you say it's in the 423, you mean on the web?
On the website.
On our, in the planning board project file.
So they got the maps reversed?
I don't know.
Lack of information.
I don't know. I'm open to input.
I'm not sure what we're voting on.
Yeah.
But we're voting on A&R, is what we're being asked.
I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
This is, this is probably the worst I've seen yet, because there's absolutely nobody here to clarify any questions of the board. Ken, is it, what's the ruling around representation for a project? As a proponent?
They're not required to, but it makes a lot of sense to represent themselves because they answer the questions.
Especially a project of this scope.
Yeah, of this size and scope, it makes a lot of sense to have a representation here. Because you're going to have questions anyway, and it makes a lot of sense to have somebody to answer them.
Yeah, and right now we have no answers.
Right.
We're just guessing as to what it is we're looking at and what it represents.
Exactly.
Yeah, particularly where that drawing has the same lots as the other drawing, but they don't match.
Right.
So I...
I need to vote on that.
Yeah, I would, I would entertain a vote to deny 3-23 Bay Point Club LLC, A&R 19 Bay Point Drive, map nine, lot 1004B and 1004A-1, due to a lack of information and incomplete submission, and nobody of any knowledge to answer questions that the board has.
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl? Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
I would like to request, similar to the last one, that if this does get resubmitted, that we have our engineer review and comment, and request that their engineer and our engineer be here when these plans are presented.
I would wholeheartedly support that.
Okay.
Do we noted?
In time to review. I mean, this came in today.
This, yeah, right. This came in.
I mean, how can you vote on it? I didn't see that today.
No, it came in, I think Jonathan, to his credit, I think he got it, like, what, 2:00 this afternoon?
Yeah, Sonya, I was actually out of the office. Sonya ended up taking it in.
Okay, so the next thing I'd like to request, per Ms. Gleason's comment, I would request that the planning office, that's you, Jonathan, just double-check the folders and make sure the right plan sets are in the right folders, particularly where we've got a new plan set and we have to get them. I wouldn't upload these until we get back. Okay, so then the next motion I would like to make, I have two more motions. Mike, I need to read your agenda. I would like, I, oop, I would like to move that the applicant, Bay Point Club LLC, make a minor modification to, what are we making a minor modification to, Ken?
To a special permit.
To the, just, I can just say the special permit.
Right.
Okay. Make a minor modification to the special permit to reflect updates to map nine, lot 104B and 104A-1. That's my first motion. They have to make modification, special permit, to reflect those changes.
For, before we look at the, or just ask to have it done?
Have it done. We get it on the record.
To lot nine and lot two?
It says map nine, I'm just reading, lot 104B and 104A-1.
Okay.
That's...
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion by Carla Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All those in favor? Sherri?
I'm not certain I understand what this is for.
This is, this is a requesting that the applicant do a minor modification to a special permit, which does not require a public hearing, and the purpose of the minor modification would be to update the documentation at the registry to reflect what he's planning to do with the A&R. But I'm not going to mention the A&R in my, because we can't condition the two.
I got it. I...
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Okay, I have another motion. I would like to move that Bay Point Club LLC make a minor modification to the special permit to reflect the changes to map two, lot 104A.
That's your motion?
That's my motion. To, yeah, so...
Okay, we have a motion by Carla Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
All right, we can get that moving forward.
Yep. Okay. Member comments? Didn't you have something you wanted to bring up?
Under staff report. Ken, did you hear back from the Attorney General on the solar bylaw? I think your last update said you expected to hear last week, right?
I expected to hear, I was up today, as a matter of fact.
Today, okay.
I haven't seen anything.
Okay. Okay, that was my, there's no update. That was, thank you.
Yeah, which is strange, though, because they've been usually pretty good on their timing and anything like that.
Unless it went to the clerk or somebody and didn't get back to you, or...
Yeah.
Who would they send it to? They'd send it to the clerk.
Send it to the clerk and the town council.
Right, okay. All right, that was my one question.
Any other comments from the court? Wants, wishes, desires? We really don't have an open public hearing, but since you said...
I have a question.
Okay, it's still not really a public hearing, but you're more than welcome to come up. Only because you're so nice.
I waited my turn, but Kathy Papalardo, Fearing Hill Road, what was the date that you said for the design guidelines, public, next public hearing?
We moved that to June 8.
June what?
8.
That's a Thursday.
2023 at a glance.
I was relying on him when I made the motion.
I was looking at May. I'm sorry. Good catch.
And then, second?
Wait, wait.
Wait a minute, one thing at a time. One thing at a time. Don't get pushy. So that would be, so we're going to have to retake that.
So I move that we update our motion to continue the review of the design guidelines. Instead of the 8th, it's June 12th.
June 12th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Carla Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, you earned a little more.
Second one is related to that. When will it be posted? When will the design guidelines be posted?
Tomorrow.
I will do them tomorrow.
Okay.
And we're going to get the right ones, right?
Yes.
The ones...
Throw the other ones away.
May 18th?
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Vote for them tomorrow with your dinner.
Thank you.
That'll be that. Okay. What's that?
Maybe it should be after dinner.
Just one more question. We moved 7:20 and 9:20 to the 26th. Was that the correct date?
It is.
Okay.
June 26th is correct.
Okay.
I thought I had my wrong planner.
Oh, do you have different days of the week? Do you have an alternative, like...
I had, I have a 2024 planner as well. I thought I grabbed the wrong one off the desk. Okay, lay it on me.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
I mean, you guys, you guys are going to get out early. I like hanging with you.
It's still light.
Aye.
I'm going to go drinking.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Yeah.